Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 11th, 2024 New Bern Board of Alderman Meeting. The prayer tonight was going to be coordinated by Alderman Prill. In his absence, he's got Reverend Anna Pickney Straight, a first press, coming to deliver our prayer tonight.
Can I just do that?
Yes, ma'am. Right to the microphone.
Do you have a microphone?
You probably do, because everybody at home wants to hear you.
Okay, yes. Let us pray. God of rivers and roadways, longleaf pines and dogwoods, mocking birds and whippoorwills, in this city where just now governance is happening, and where in just a little while, a symphony's melodies will soar into evening skies where breezes mix with the flicker of fireflies, we know this is the day that you have made. We are rejoicing in it. Here are the song of Thanksgiving we offer for leaders that have been called from and for this city. Bless them, endow them with hope for this day, vision for tomorrow, the ability to see and hear the stranger, hands that kindly help, and wisdom discerning forward-moving ways. Challenge us all as we look and work for a day when there are no more homes that need repair because of Hurricane Florence, when backpacks do not need to be filled with food for the weekend, and overdose deaths are counted as one in a million instead of eighty per one hundred thousand. Lord, in this life that brings both grit and glitter, guide us in going to the places you are already blessing. Where there is heartbreak, both ours and yours, may we see opportunities for change, possibilities for growth, and through it all, may the fierce and fabulous image you knit within each one of us shine forth in the ways you created, fully and authentically. And maybe this is already clear, God, but we're praying not only for these leaders, but for all of us, and for the ways in which we are woven together in the tapestry that makes up this community, for we need not just some of us, but all of us. You are the God of this day and all days, and it is in your many names we pray. Amen.
Amen. If you're able to stand, please do so as we pledge allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Alderman Prill. Alderman Royal. Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Odom.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
President.
Alderman Brinson.
Here.
Okay. Board, item number three is to approve the agenda. Are there any changes you would like to make? Not an entertaining motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like to approve the agenda as is.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Alderman Kinsey was the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Next up is request and petition of citizens. We have one tonight, Mr. Roland Bowen of 901 Leeward Drive in Trent Woods.
Thank you, Board, for seeing me today. Just wanted to implore the Board to consider ordinance or something along the lines to not allow these bake and smoke shops within 100 feet or 100 yards of daycares and schools. I think it's not a good look for our city. I've been selling real estate here for a number of years, and I have had people ask how these places are right near places of education and small children with their bright lights, advertising unhealthy habits to our children. I don't think it's a positive for the city of New Bern, and I would just like to ask that the city of New Bern consider doing something in regards to that and making an ordinance. They're pretty lights, they're nice advertisement. I have small children. My son will be going to the middle school next year, and even on the way here, I noticed as right beside the middle school in bright lights is an illegal leaf that sits there. Whether you have feelings about that or not, it's either way, but it's still just not a good influence for our children, and I would just ask that the city take into consideration and look into possibly passing an ordinance of that sort. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll actually have some comments in our new business regarding this, so I'll just wait until then. That was all, the request and petition of citizens, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the Board on the consent agenda?
May I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as is?
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Brinson.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes. Consent agenda carries. Next up is item number 10, conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to amend Article 26 Stormwater Quality Management and Discharge Control of Appendix A Land Use of the Code of Ordinances. Mr. Childs.
Mayor, I'll be fielding this one if you'd like.
Oh, okay. I noticed George looked a little surprised when I called his name.
Yes, sir. Prior to the hearing, I'll introduce the issue. You have before you an updated stormwater ordinance. This is an ordinance mandated by the state. Several years ago, the state decided that across all the counties, we had a wide divergence in how these stormwater ordinances were written. The rules are largely the same, largely, but a lot of variance in how they read and how they're organized. So the state mandated an update and added a process that is unique, in my experience, where they required the Environmental Management Commission to approve, pre-approve, all of the ordinances. So what you have before you is what is required by statute and what has been approved and authorized by the Environmental Management Commission. Substantively, there is very little difference in this modernized version and what we've had in place. All of the metrics that engineers and developers worry about and think about are the same. What is much improved is the way this ordinance is organized. It's much more intuitive, logical, one-stop shopping. I think it'll make life a lot easier for staff, certainly for developers, and as part of this, the state has also required certain manuals and processes that are built into the code so that, again, staff will have an easier time handing out to developers and engineers exactly what is required. So with that said, happy to answer any questions.
The Board have any questions? If not, I will open a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on item number 10, please come forward at this time. Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Take it.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. So it looks like now you're looking for the Board to approve the ordinance?
Yes, sir, exactly. And if you took a dip into it, it's actually just Division One is the stormwater section. That is the new section. The chapter had to be renumbered, so you've got illegal discharge and some other things in there that are exactly the same as the existing ordinance. So it's just Division One.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the Board on item number 10?
May I make a motion to adopt an ordinance to amend Article Stormwater Quality Management and Discharge Control for the land use codes?
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Brinson.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 11, consider adopting a resolution approving a lease agreement with the Area Day Reporting Program for Youth for property located at 500 Fort Totten Drive. Mr. Childs.
Good evening, Board. Mayor, this is a renewal for the Area Day Reporting Program building on 500 Fort Totten Drive. This will be a renewal of a longstanding one-year lease. None of the terms have changed from our prior agreements, and we found this tenant to be a positive thing at this building. I would recommend approval of this lease.
Board have questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement with the Area Day Reporting Program for Youth for property located at 500 Fort Totten Drive.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Brinson.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes. Motion carries. Next up is item number 12, and actually, we can look at 12, 13, and 14 together if the Board would like. They're very similar, so I'll read them all. Item number 12 is to consider adopting a resolution approving a utility relocation agreement with the NC DOT for Element 35601 dot two dot four, program number R4463 for the North Carolina 43 Connector. Item number 13 is the same or similar utility relocation agreement for Element 204695, program R5777C for US 70. And lastly, item number 14 is the same resolution awarding an engineer agreement with HBK Engineering related to NC DOT relocation agreements aforementioned. So next up, I believe Mr. Bouchard is here to give us some explanation for these.
Thank you. Good evening. Most of what I have to say is probably redundant to what you just read, but first off is an agreement with NC DOT regarding the 43 Connector to provide engineering and construction services, and that agreement allows the city to be reimbursed for those engineering and construction services. And then, second of all, is a similar agreement for NC DOT project on Highway 70 between Thurmond Road and Havelock. So the next section of that James City project, about six miles of electric distribution system, needs to be relocated for that. So that's an agreement to be reimbursed for those services. And then the last item is engineering services to help us provide all the engineering associated with the James City project.
Okay. Alderman Kinsey?
You mentioned seeking out for an engineer. We don't have anyone in-house that has the capabilities of doing the work that it would take to do this, because seeing like this is something that's an ongoing thing with the daily activities that we have going on every day with the city, is it possible that we need to have someone in-house that can do that?
Not to the extent that it needs to be done and at the pace it needs to be done. It's much more than staff can provide and be responsive to NC DOT. These folks that we're hiring, they not only specialized in electric power systems, but they're also specialized in dealing with NC DOT projects. Now, we do have staff that follows this along and coordinates and assists the engineering firm as well as NC DOT. So we are still managing the project. We just don't have the resources to focus every single day, every minute, on this project because we're operating the system. We have other things to do.
So with that being said, will they be paying for that as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hundred percent.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
There's no more questions. I make a motion.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a utility relocation agreement with NC DOT for program number R4463, 43 NC, 43 Connector, and resolution approving a utility relocation agreement with NC DOT for program R577C for US 70, and adopt a resolution awarding engineering agreement with HBK Engineering related to NC DOT relocation agreement, program number R577C for US 70.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Brinson.
Alderman Brinson.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes. Motion carries. Next up is item number 15, consider adopting a resolution approving the sale of 1010 Green Street. Mr. Hughes.
Mayor, we received a bid in the amount of $2,700 from the third-party development and estate investment group for the purchase of this vacant .069 acre partial. The tax value on that partial is $5,400. No upset bids have been received. This property was acquired by the city and the county in November of 2023 through tax foreclosure. If the property is sold for this bid, the city will receive $867.74, and the county will receive $1,832.26 from the proceeds.
Board have questions?
Can we do all three of them?
Sure. Item number 16 is consider adopting a resolution approving the purchase of 24 Avant Street. Mr. Williams, you want to talk about that one?
Yes, Mayor. The owners of the clouds, they approached us regarding the purchasing of this parcel, which is 1.195 acre. It's on the backside of the Henderson Park, and we could utilize that property to serve for additional unimproved area.
I'll tell you what, I just realized, one of these is a sale, one's a purchase. Let's take them separately. So item number 15 was the one that Mr. Hughes described, and that was to authorize the sale of 1010 Green Street.
Make a motion that we approve the sale of 1010 Green Street.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Brinson.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes. Motion carries. Now, item number 16 is the one that Mr. Williams just described, and that's a parcel that's adjacent to Henderson Park that staff has recognized will be beneficial for future expansion and plans. Is that correct?
That's correct. And the purchase price that he's offered for us was $4,000, and the current tax value on that property is $7,200.
Okay. May I make a motion that we approve the purchase of 24 Avant Street?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
That property is being purchased by the city, correct?
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments? Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Brinson.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 17 is consider adopting an ordinance for the demolition of 1300 Clark Avenue. Mr. Ezel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board. This evening, staff is seeking the approval of an ordinance to demolish the dwelling unit and any accessory structures located at 1300 Clark Avenue. Staff has sent the owner of record an initial minimal housing letter on July 14th of 2023 stating that the dwelling located at 1300 Clark Avenue had deficiencies violating the city's minimal housing code. Staff has attempted to contact the owners via the United States Postal Service. No working phone numbers or email or relatives were identified during our investigation. Staff has filed a complaint and notice of hearing on January 2nd, 2024, with confirmed delivery of these complaints. None of the defendants or respondents responded to the January 17th hearing. On January 19th of 2024, the order the billing inspector was served to the owners to bring the dwelling back into compliance with the minimal housing standards established by Chapter 38 of the code with an expiration date of March 17th, 2024. To date, there has been no further contact from the owners. No permits have been applied for, and the dwelling remains noncompliant at this time. Demolition estimate from Public Works for this property is $7,447, not including asbestos testing and abatement that will still be needed. Utility terminations for this property have been completed. Staff plans to utilize funding from the Community Development Block Grant Program for this demolition. A complete list of the chronological events of the related property, as well as pictures, are in your packets in front of you.
Board have questions?
Yes, I do. I really hate to see this property be demolished. Is this, and you did say that you could not contact any of the owners?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. So my next question would be, wouldn't this be a good property for the Redevelopment Commission to take on with their contractors to restore or remodel this home?
It would be good for them to do that. The problem is, you still have to get the owners to sell the property or donate the property to the Redevelopment Commission.
Okay. Right. That was my next statement. Is that something, I just hate to see this structure be demolished when it can be saved. So I have a problem with having it being demolished.
I guess the legal conundrum is, we don't have ownership, and if we can't get anybody to respond on fixing things, are you saying that we should make an attempt to purchase it from, to see if we got a response that way?
Exactly.
Didn't your packet say that it was under county foreclosure?
I believe it is under the tax foreclosure process as well, but again, those processes could take several more years to come to fruition, and it would be the same result where we come to the city. And then from there, the city can determine what they want to do after that tax foreclosure process, yes. process, yes.
If the tax foreclosure process is dragging out, it's because they cannot find the owners.
And then Scott, wouldn't at that point, it become a no owner's property?
No ma'am. Yeah, it's going to drag on and on until they figure out a human that has an interest in the property.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes ma'am. It's a pleasure of the board on item number seventeen.
I make a motion that we adopt an ordinance for the demolition of thirteen hundred Clark Avenue.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
No.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you Patrick. Item number eighteen is consider adopting a resolution approving the classification pay plan for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Ms. Hayes.
Good evening, mayor and members of the board. Tonight you have before you the proposed classification pay plan for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. In the memo that you have before you, I have outlined all of the proposed changes and also just to make sure that you are aware, it's in the memo as well, the pay plan is proposed to increase by two percent as a result of the proposed cost of living adjustment. I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have. If not, I'm asking that you adopt the resolution to approve the proposed pay plan for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Alderman Kinsey.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
The studies that we have had done in the past still puts us behind. We have not caught up yet. And I'm not in agreement with the two percent due to the gas pump and going to the grocery store. I'm a candidate as well as the employees that work for the city. It costs me too. I don't know how everyone else thinks about others, but with the way that we are going and the way that we are conducting ourselves and trying to catch up, it seems to me that we're going to never catch up to equal out the playing field that all the employees will be paid correctly. My understanding is that when the opportunity comes available, they will leave us to go to another place that will pay them the money after we've put in all the training and paid the money for the training for the individual. I would like to see a four percent instead or a two percent because if you would do the math and see actually what they're going to get at the end of that day, they really ain't getting nothing. I mean, I'd just like for that to be reconsidered. I mean, we say that we love our employees. They're the ones that is the face of the city. They're the ones that work real hard. I don't know what each employee make, but I know they don't make what the department heads make. And they have families too, that they're trying to make ends meet. That is just something that I think that needs to be thought out correctly and looked at because if you're behind and you said you're staying behind, when will you catch up? You know? That's just my thought that I would like to see it be reconsidered because if you have a guy that's making thirty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars and you look at that two percent, do the math, see what you think he's going to take home. These guys really give us a lot, you know? And I just think that we need to consider that. You know, it's like somebody telling that they love the Lord, but they don't know how to pray. But that's another conversation for another day, but we need to consider and seeing what we can do for the employees to bring them up to do the right thing. Because if we keep doing this, we're going to never catch up. The next year, we'll be doing the same thing. The next year, we'll be doing the same thing. That's just my thought. I'm not upset with nobody. I'd just like for everybody... I go to the pump too. I go to the grocery store, everything's gone up, but your wages. I've been on the board for seventeen years. We even never had a raise because my colleagues don't vote for that. I can speak with them, you know about them, but we speak for the employees too. But when we, I guess, my opinion is to take care of the people that take care of this city. The city is growing every day. That's all I have to say. We need to keep up. You know what I mean? You need to pay your way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Best?
Alderman Kinsey, the statement you just made now, you said your colleagues don't vote for raises. I just want you to know that I have voted for raises before, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Best. You were so kind to brush my memory up.
All right.
Right. Thank you. You were so kind. I like that.
You are welcome. And I too agree with you. I, you know, that's what she's asking for us to approve this reclassification pay plan so that we can, you know, get this two percent. And I concur with you. I would love to give the employees four percent as well.
Thank you. That is so kind of you. So have you told the other guys to do the same thing?
Told what other guys?
You remember you just said, I said my colleagues.
That's not my right to tell another individual what their preference may be of voting, but I'm just correct.
I'm just being...
I know you are. I know you are, but I'll just make that correction.
So I just want to be clear, on this particular item, this is to change the classification pay plan. This would move all the numbers up an additional two percent in addition to the two percent that's in front of us. Is that what you're saying?
We go from two to four. I add two percent to that would make it four percent.
Okay.
Okay, I'm glad you said that. You just made my brain work a little bit. What is the fund balance? Give me an estimate on that. Could you do that for me, please? Because this is day-to-day operational stuff.
So while she's looking at that, I just want to be clear. So this is about changing the pay plan?
Yes, sir.
And inside the proposed budget, the manager has a two percent COLA or salary increase for everyone. Are you saying that you want that to change to four percent?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
From two to four.
Kim, you better start getting your calculator out, start crunching some numbers because...
So while Kim is looking at the most recent estimate on fund balance, to do a four percent increase, total four percent, you're looking at a total of an additional million. Two percent was half a million dollars. So while Kim is looking at total fund balance, I can go ahead and tell you unrestricted fund balance, we're looking at as of the audit and the estimated numbers on March thirty-first, twenty-two, twenty-four, unrestricted, unassigned is six point nine million dollars. Now, we have much more than that, but that is what has, is unassigned and the board can choose to do whatever they wish to with that. But I do want to remind you, as we talked about this during the budget process, this is one reason why I asked for a three cent increase. I do not recommend consistently pulling from fund balance to balance this budget. Next year, this is going to come back to us again, so those are my comments for you. And it's not that everyone supports our city employees, but if this is going to happen, we've got to have a fix in place moving forward where this is self-supporting.
I'd like to make another comment. My understanding is pay your way. If we see that we cannot do that, when you go to the pump or go to the stores or they raise the prices, so if the prices have to be raised to meet the need, that is the proper thing to do. I mean, I might be missing it here or something. I mean, I'm trying to get a understanding here. I mean, if you have to raise the taxes to meet the service, would you rather have five, let's say we got five trucks and we can't meet the budget, so we're going to let all five of them stay broke down? No, three going to be broke down and two's operating to operate the whole city. So is this something that we're going to constantly do all the time? We have to think out of the box. I think we have to do something a little different. I mean, nobody wants to raise taxes, but if your city is growing and you have a need there, you try to meet the need to present a service. Is that what it's called? A service? Or you sit back and say, man, I can't do that, man. You know, I just can't do that. Think about what you got to do. We said in the seat that you have to make a hard decision. I don't have a problem. If we're going to do the right thing, do the right thing. An old man told me a long time ago, if you want to do pennies and keep feeding the monkey peanuts, hey, what you going to get a monkey? So what we going to do? Let's do the right thing. That's what I'm here to do.
Alderman Brinson? Mr. City Manager, for the budget that you are now proposing in number twenty, how much fund balance is being used to balance that budget?
In the proposed budget, which is item number twenty, fund balance eight hundred eighty-two thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars.
And so what?
And that's making you assume that there is going to be a one cent increase, which is just under half a million dollars.
What number did you get that is available? It's going to be left over.
So we run this out of quarter and the last one was just under seven million.
It's just an estimate. This is just an estimate that we're getting.
Turn your mic. Turn your microphone off.
Sorry. Just under seven million is unrestricted.
Unrestricted funds that's going to be left over.
That's how much is in fund balance, estimated fund balance?
Estimate.
You know Johnny, I, there's nobody here that would love to give the employees a bigger raise than me. But you made a statement that you go to the gas pump and you pay more, you go to the grocery store and you pay more, you go buy clothes and you pay more, and so do every one of our citizens. They're in the same boat that you're in and the burden at this point in time would be on them if we raised the taxes.
They're paying for a service. You keep forgetting, it's a service that the city run, that the people pay for, so everybody has to participate in this, okay? Everybody has to participate together.
I just, I want to share a couple of figures with you that you can ponder on. I'm just talking about general fund right now, I'm not talking about enterprise funds. In the general fund, our salaries and benefits as a percent to our revenue for the last ten years has averaged seventy-three percent. This proposed budget is eighty-four percent.
How much have the city grown? How many new houses that we have come up with? How much, how many new houses have come up this year versus last year?
Well, this number that I'm giving you is a percent and that takes into account the growth that we've had.
Okay.
So we're growing, we're paying. I think it's a little disingenuous to say that we haven't paid the employees when we just had a salary study and what was the average increase that we did over the last two budget cycles? Some of them were double digits, right?
Correct. We did get cost of living adjustments and merit increases and then, yes, last year we did the implementation of the market pay study.
So when you think about the revenue that we bring in, which takes into account the ad valorem, the growth that we've had, takes in all of that, for the last ten years, we've averaged seventy-three, so if you want to look at it simplified, seventy-three cents of every dollar that the city takes in, we pay that into employees. This budget with the two percent that's factored in, takes that seventy-three cent to eighty-four cent. So that's a pretty significant increase.
But we're still behind. We're still behind. We still haven't caught up.
Would the employees pay? Is that what you're referring to?
That's you talking. That's you talking.
I'm not, I asked a question. I'm not talking. Are you referring to?
I didn't say that.
We haven't caught up with the employees pay? Is that what you were talking about? We hadn't caught up?
We did a study to find out where we are on the pay scale and paying people to work for the city of New Bern, okay? We are behind in catching up with other cities to pay the employees correctly.
Well, according, I mean, we paid a hundred percent of everybody, of the recommended salary increase to every employee in the city of New Bern, but to for two.
So what you're telling me is that you don't have an interest in, you say you have an interest looking for them, but you're challenging me to tell me where we are, where we at.
I just want to make sure that the truth is understood.
No, you don't want to make sure anything.
I'm not going to say anything else. This is ridiculous.
You don't have to, man. You don't have to. I'm a big man.
Alderman Kinsey, do you want to make a motion to take the two percent up to four percent?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to take the two percent up to four percent.
Before you make that motion, before we approve a motion, my reasoning for moving the two percent COLA to four percent was because employees was not going to get a merit increase this year. That's why I suggested going along with you for four percent. If we can't do four percent, let's do three percent. But that was my reasoning for stating that I agree with you about the four percent because there was, there will be no merit increase this year for next budget year.
Just so I'm clear, are you seconding his motion?
For four percent?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second to increase the salary adjustment from two percent to four percent. Any further discussion?
I'll just make a statement since I'm going to vote against this, that we can't afford it. I know that Alderman Kinsey has repeatedly said that there's seven million in the unrestricted fund balance, but again, that's only thirteen percent, which is pretty close to our goal of what we need to keep in there. Remind everyone that hurricane season is coming up and we can't, I don't want to raise taxes, so I'll be voting against the budget as well. So I just want to explain why I'm voting out.
I like the way he said hurricane season. We had three employees that was working during the last hurricane that lost just about everything they had and they was trying to help other people, you know, and they couldn't even afford to take care of themselves. Just want to throw that in.
Any further discussion? Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
What is the rate from two to four percent?
Yes, sir.
No.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
No.
Excuse me. Mayor Odom?
No.
I'd like to make a statement here. So it gets, it gets a chance for people to see exactly where your hearts are, what you think about these people, when they tell you a lie. I love you. I believe in you. I work for you. You get a chance to see it come out of their mouth as well as mine. I'm a big enough man to stand for what I believe in and what I do, okay? I'm a little out of character right now, but I'm not afraid of anything.
Okay. Well, it's the pleasure of the board on item number eighteen.
I make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the classification pay plan for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey?
No.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next up, thank you, Ms. Hayes. Next up is item number nineteen, consider adopting an ordinance amending the schedule, excuse me, schedule of fees and charges. Ms. Ostrom.
As part of the budget process, the board annually adopts an amended schedule of fees and charges effective July first, two thousand twenty-four. The FY twenty-four, twenty-five revenue projections include the changes to the fees and charges which are identified in the red line versions in sections one for administration, two cemeteries, three fire, five parks and rec, nine public works, ten refuge and eleven utilities for electric, water and sewer. It is requested that the board consider adopting the ordinance amending the schedule of fees and charges.
Board have questions on item number nineteen.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt an ordinance amending the schedule for fees and charges.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is item number twenty, consider adopting the budget ordinance for FY twenty-four, twenty-five. Ms. Ostrom.
The city manager presented FY twenty-five proposed budget to the board on May fourteenth. Budget workshops were held May twenty-first and twenty-second. A public hearing was conducted on May twenty-eighth, at which time no one from the public offered comment. This ordinance reflects the changes requested during the board workshops and includes a two percent cost of living adjustment for all employees and a property tax rate increase of one cent reflecting thirty-nine cents per hundred dollar valuation. Budgets are balanced and appropriated as follows. The general fund with forty-nine million, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred seventy-two dollars. Municipal service district fund for four hundred sixty-six thousand, two hundred. The water fund for twelve million, eight hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Sewer fund for thirteen million, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, thirteen dollars. Electric fund sixty-four million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Employees benefit insurance fund for eight million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. Emergency telephone system fund for one hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Police special revenue fund for thirty thousand dollars. Public private partnerships fund, ten thousand dollars. Water capital reserve fund, fifteen thousand dollars. The metropolitan planning organization fund for two hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars. Equitable sharing, U.S. Department of Justice fund, twenty-three thousand, thirty-five dollars. Solid waste fund, four million, seven hundred and seven thousand. Redevelopment fund, forty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. It is requested that the board consider adopting the FY twenty-four, twenty-five annual budget ordinance.
Does the board have questions on item number twenty?
Yes, I do. You're saying that, here you're saying that, so we'll be voting on a three cent rate increase from thirty-eight to point forty-one, but then you, down here, you're saying a one cent tax rate increase.
Oh, in the memo?
Yes.
In the memo, the memo, that's what we started with, with the city manager originally proposed.
Okay.
And then it went into the next statement was that we made the adjustments according to the board workshops, what was suggested to one cent.
Yeah, all right. Thank you for that.
Yep.
It's a pleasure of the board on item number twenty.
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-four through twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Brinson.
Alderman Brinson?
No.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
No. Motion carries, three to two. Next up is item number twenty-one, and I've got to note that twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four can all be considered together, so I will summarize those as best I can and then let Ms. Ostrom provide any additional details. Item number twenty-one is to consider adopting an ordinance to amend and close the City Hall Elevator Project Fund. Number twenty-two is consider adopting an ordinance to amend and close the IT Network Merger Project Fund. Item number twenty-three is consider adopting an ordinance to amend and close the Martin Marietta Park Project Fund. And item number twenty-four is to consider adopting an ordinance to amend the General Capital Projects Fund. Ms. Ostrom, do you have anything you'd like to add to all of those?
No, just to note that we're transferring the balances from item twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three to the General Capital Projects Fund, which will then go into a line for capital projects, future purposes.
Okay. The board have questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance to amend and close the City Hall Elevator Project Fund. Ordinance to amend and close the Information Technology Network Merger Project Fund. Adopt an ordinance to amend and close the Martin Marietta Park Project Fund and adopt an ordinance to amend the General Capital Projects Fund.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey? Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Kim. Item number twenty-five is appointments. I know Alderman Kinsey has one, he told me, for his, but we also have several.
I've got one too.
Okay. Go ahead, Alderman Astor.
Mayor, I'd like to recommend Charles Schultz and Michael Quinn to the Police Civil Service Board.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those two gentlemen are hereby appointed. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I've spoken with Mr. Jim Morrison and so I'd like to reappoint him to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay. Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Morrison is reappointed. Alderman Kinsey, you said you had appointment?
Somebody on the board of adjustments.
Board of adjustments, yes, sir.
Oh, let's see here. Madam Clerk, you sent me some information and I cannot remember the guy's name.
Actually, that gentleman's been appointed to something and is not eligible now.
He's not? Okay, so, sir, I have to rethink this here.
Okay, all right. Anyone else have any other appointments tonight? Okay, attorney's report.
Nothing important, ma'am.
City manager's report.
Just to update on a few things, want to remind the board we are having the city employee luncheon this Thursday from eleven a.m. to one p.m. at West New Bern Recreation Center. We'll see you there. The community cleanup day will be also held on Thursday. It's going to be held at Amherst Boulevard, that's right along where West New Bern Recreation Center is, so we encourage citizens to come out and participate. If you can't come to that location, we encourage you to go to your neighborhood and pick up trash in your own area. And do want to remind you about the workshop on June twenty-fifth at four p.m. That's going to be right here. At that time, we're going to talk about a potential bond referendum.
Okay. We'll move on to new business. Alderman Brinson.
Just a reminder, Mr. Mayor, that Elks Lodge is having their salute to the flag on Saturday at Union Point Park at eleven hundred.
Okay. Alderman Best?
Yeah, just one thing. I just wanted to, I guess, public works and I guess parks and recs or teamwork and city manager, are they doing the parks and recs and public works doing the actual bridge wall that's connecting, setting?
Actually, public works is taking the lead on that project. So they're doing pretty much all of that.
Okay. I just want to say thank you to them and to the city's staff because that is really, it's really coming to fruition and it's a great, it's a great walkable access for our citizens to use to connect over to the Stanley White Rec Center and then over to the Vault Center. So it's going to, I see it as a connection, bridging the gap here for our citizens from one sector of town over to another sector of town. here for our citizens from one sector of town over to another sector of town, and I just wish that the sidewalk could have come to fruition as well, right there, because that Garden Street really needs a sidewalk, but to no avail. Mr. Williams, do you have any update on whether or not, any other contact from the individuals that was involved in trying to get that property for sidewalk, or it's still a no-go?
They're still looking at some engineering on redirecting that corner to try to make it safer, and, and right now Public Works is still looking at, looking at that, so I'll get you a follow-up on that.
Okay, yeah, and for our citizens that's watching and listening, it's right there on, going around the corner on Sutton Street into Garden Street, that's the area of where the improvement is coming with the walk, walkway and with, with hopefully sidewalk in the future, and that's all I have, ma'am.
Okay, Kinsey?
I don't have anything else tonight, sir.
Okay, Alderman Astor?
Nothing, aye.
Um, I just have a couple of things, I'll do the, do this one first, so if you all recall, a request was made by a Ms. Linda Simmons Henry about a historical marker that some in the community had raised funds to put this historical marker up for Ms. Loretta Bryant Smith. The board had set the policy that any requests would come before us, before it was placed on public property. This board took that up for consideration and said that we were not interested in being placed on public property. There were little questions, because I think when the request originally came in, they had offered to put it on private property, but then they changed and wanted it on public property. The board said we weren't interested in that, so I made the suggestion that since there was a little question about where it could go, that I volunteered to meet with this request store and two other Aldermen. The two other Aldermen were going to be Alderman Prill, Alderman Royal, Alderman Prill couldn't make the meeting, he's out of the country, Alderman Royal could not make the meeting, so I was the only one there. Mr. Childs from Public Works, city manager, assistant city manager were there. We met with the request store, who lives in Cary, North Carolina. She came in and made her request, I explained to her why we were having the meeting, that we were trying to find a resolution or some sort of compromise. She did not like that response, and she got very offended, as did a couple of other folks that were with her in the meeting. I also mentioned that she's also hung up the telephone on two of our staff members because she did not like the answer that they gave. So I told her I would report back to this board on how that conversation went, I told her she had a couple of options, she could come, the first meeting of any month under petition of citizens and provide all the information she would like to talk about this, or if there were a majority of this board that would like to have her on a future agenda, that could be done under new business. The mayor doesn't make motions or second motions, so if this board wanted to put that on an agenda, it would be up to you to make that decision. But I personally had the conversation, and it, it turned a little too personal for me. I think they took offense because they looked at our, our decision as a board against this particular person that they wanted to put a marker up for, other than the fact that we're saying this is the case for everyone, so I'm sharing that with you all.
So what you're saying here is that with the decision that the board made, the location of a marker, okay, we're not gonna put the marker on city property anymore?
Correct.
So the, so the marker will go on private property, and that's what she wasn't hearing?
Yes, she doesn't want it on private property, she wants it on the right-of-way, is that correct, Mr. Manager and Assistant Manager?
It's correct.
Okay, so the right-of-way means that we are responsible for the upkeep of that
Correct.
property there on city property?
Yes, sir.
The reason why that, that decision was made due to vandalism with other, with other
Markers?
Markers that was placed, so we gotta take care of that type of business.
So no action by the board is required unless you wanted to have them come on a future agenda to make their request?
Have they made any connection or contact with anyone to come forward to speak with us about that?
No, that was left at the meeting that we had, I, I told them what their options were.
But they had the information though, based on what the, the, the rules and regulations are the board evolved, they do have that?
Yes, okay.
So if they want to come and speak with us, I'll listen.
So that would be making a motion to include this on a future agenda?
If they want to do that, I don't want to deny anyone that they would like to do that, I'll listen. If we already have it in stone, you know, they don't understand.
Is she gonna be interested in coming down from Cary to do a presentation?
She said she would, but Ms. Beckton, who was with her, said she would not come if there was a, on the agenda.
Well, I want to leave it open, so she like to come down? Yes, sir, that's why we're here, to listen to the public.
Why don't we ask the city manager to just, to contact her and tell her that if she's interested in being placed on the agenda to come in and make a presentation, she's more than able to do that?
Well, so, yeah, so technically, our rules and procedures say that staff puts items on the agenda if it's a staff directive. This is a public request, so this is where the board would need to, under new business, somebody make a motion, we get a second, we take a vote, if you would like to put this on a future agenda.
Well, I would like for the, for the individual to make that statement of, yes, I will come before the board.
Okay, so the clerk could reach out, I hate to do that, 'cause she, she was the one person that she hung up on, but somebody from staff could reach out to her and tell her, we discussed this tonight, we did not have a full board, the two members that were gonna meet originally, we're not here again, and then see if she would like to make that request, and then at our next board meeting, we could take this up, if she says, yes, I'd like to come make a presentation, then we can discuss it then. Mr. Attorney, you give me a look at what?
Yes, sir, I, I just want to avoid any miscommunication, that's, that, that, this is an invitation to reconsider a decision that you've already made. What, what I thought I'm hearing is no one wants to deprive someone of an opportunity to state their case, that's one point of view, the other point of view is she might hear that she's being invited back to, so that you can change your mind, and you may, but how that phrase may, may land differently.
I, I kinda feel like the meeting that we had was what Alderman Kinsey was offering, her opportunity to come make her presentation, and we did that, it just so happens I was the only board member that was there, so I took the brunt of the, yeah, which is fine. I was the bad guy, but it's okay. So we'll leave it, no action at this point in time, and if she would like to come back, we can handle that.
And she, and to, to your earlier point, she's obviously free to come as a matter of rights.
Sure.
The first minute of any hunt.
Sure.
That does not require an invitation.
Right, and if she would like to bring the two individuals she brought with that meeting, they can have twelve minutes, 'cause they can each fill out a petition of citizens.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that scratches that city manager, I mean, not city manager, but city clerk does not have to contact her.
Correct.
I will reach out to her, since I was the one that had the meeting, and let her know how this discussion went tonight, so.
It'd be nice of you.
I will do that, sir. Uh, the next and last item I had was about vape shops, and it's ironic that Mr. Bowen was here tonight, this is something that I have received a lot of complaints on over the last several years, where these have become extremely popular. We've had numerous meetings with staff, attorney, to talk about what the options are. This is not a New Bern problem, this is a North Carolina problem. I travel extensively across the state, and I see these issues everywhere. I'm not going to comment specifically on any of them in New Bern, because there are some pending litigations with Craven County Sheriff's Office, but I will tell you that there are some issues, some legalities, when a, I'll call it a vape shop, when a vape shop is selling a legal item, that they may classify, or they may try to portray it as being a legal item, when that item is confiscated and tested and it's found to be illegal, that trips other issues from a legal standpoint, and some of those mean that they are in a close proximity to a school, so there is other pending litigation that's taking place from the sheriff's office, and they've been a great partner of ours with the police department as well. My issue that I have is the fact that I strongly believe that almost every single one of the fifteen that are within our city limits, unless I missed any, are in violation of our sign ordinance. The bright signs, the flashing lights around the windows, those are violations, the way I interpreted our ordinance. So a couple of weekends ago, I took some time, at night, I rode around, I made a list of every vape shop within our city limits, name, address of the business, I also looked up on GIS to find out who the owner was of the property, because I believe, Mr. Attorney, the owner is actually the one responsible if there are violations. A lot of these are new, and a lot of them, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say, I bet they probably didn't get a sign permit, 'cause looking at some of the signs, it's pretty clear to me that they cannot be within our ordinance, so I know that our staff is working on a very intrusive land use change of our plan, it's gonna take a year and a half, two years, before we bring that before this board. So I would like to know, what are our options of how we can regulate these types of businesses before we get into the land use change, because two years is a long time for us to wait, and that's a lot of complaints that I receive about something that I would like for us to be able to take some sort of action on, so I guess this is probably a question for Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir, in addition to the zoning regulations that you currently have in place, which allow a vape shop in a C-three zone, you can, you do have the legal authority to impose some, some separation between them from schools or themselves, those are certainly options. I think to your point on the sign ordinance, there is, those are things that we can do right now, and I, I, I hear the complaints as well, the complaints come my way or more about the flashing lights, and that is something that I know you've prepared a list to the city manager, I'll get that copy and, and take a look and see what I can do to at least start addressing some of the, the blinking light issues. But as to the overall regulation, it's, it's really just a matter of, in addition to what we currently have, having some kind of separation, if we think that's gonna move the needle. My, my, my recommendation might be to start with the, the lights and the sign issue, and see, see how that plays as one experiences driving around town, and then if we still believe that we have an issue, we can take a second look at further regulation.
Okay.
Yes, sir. What, what zoning is required for a vape shop? Do you know off the top of your head?
I believe it's just C-three, which is our, our heaviest commercial zones.
Can we remove them from that?
Well, they've gotta be allowed somewhere.
Well, I mean, we can keep the ones that are here, and they're grandfathered in, but that would stop any additional ones.
Yeah, that's gonna present some legal issues, it will, yeah, and we don't wanna get, we don't, we don't wanna fight that fight. No, sir.
If, if people wanna operate those businesses legally, and follow our ordinances, and comply, and not sell things that are packaged and marketed as one thing, but actually it's something else in the package, that's a different story, but so far, we've had some pretty poor experiences with those dealings of those individuals, so. Any other comments from the board?
I was just looking up, was it HB five sixty-three is being debated in the Senate, to see if that would, it, it doesn't talk about any restrictions around schools, but it starts testing requirements and stuff like that, so that wouldn't solve the problem that we're talking about.
Okay, well, we've got the information now, we can work on the signs, because that's the worst part of it, I mean, it looks like a circus when you pull up there at night, so. We're working on it, and have been for a while, and unfortunately, there's no easy answer to it, so. That's all the new business I had, do we need a closed session?
No, sir, thank you.
Not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Say a move.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? To adjourn.